Council meeting called to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 4th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mursky, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the council meeting of March 21st, 2018, and bills for payment on March 30th and April 6th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mursky, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Are there anyone here for repository sales? You can come up to the mic. I state your name and address and the property.
Amanda Ortiz. My address is 2010 Cascade Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, and the property is at 814 Cascade Street, Erie, Pennsylvania.
What do you plan on doing with the property?
Preparing it for my aunt to move in.
Anybody have any questions for?
Madam President.
Yes.
First off, I want to thank you for taking an interest in this property and rehabbing it. Are you working with a contractor or do you guys plan on doing the work yourself?
My husband and I are going to do the work ourselves.
Okay.
Well, most of it on the inside.
Okay.
The outside, I'll have to get some help.
All right. And you guys have the financial resources in order to make this happen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll be in touch.
Miss, miss, could you stop in the clerk's office? She needs to get some information for you. Thanks.
Is there anyone else for repository sales? Is there anyone else for repository sales? Last time, is there anyone else for repository sales? That takes us into citizens to be heard.
Jason Brendel, 4131 McCollin Avenue, Erie, PA 16510. Fifty years ago last week, the Vietnam War came to an end with the withdrawal of all the American troops, fifty years ago last week. But today is more prevalent across the nation. Martin Luther King Jr. was shot in Memphis on this day fifty years ago. The reason why he was shot is because of hatred, social exclusion for the citizens across the nation. Let's have a moment of silence for Dr. Martin Luther King today. Thank you. Now, the one thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that social exclusion is happening fifty years ago, and social exclusion is happening in the city of Erie. This right here I have passed out, so I'm going to give you guys, shows a better image or presentation on who I am. I'm an Erie ambassador with the Erie Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm a spotlighted member of the young Erie professionals this month, three years ago. And also, there was a wonderful article in Erie Gay News about me being an excellent candidate for city council. Now, I thought it was a good image or presentation, but for the past couple of years, on social media and in through the word of mouth in Erie, I still get rejected, I still get excluded, I still get left out. And I feel that there are many citizens that get left out, that get bullied, that get picked on still. Now, last week, I received the certification. I have completed six months of intense therapy with drug and alcohol from stairways, and I have completed it and have been discharged. This right here is proof of the fact is that many in Erie call me a drug addict, think that I have a drug problem. If I had a problem or if I did have a problem, I took care of it because I'm taking care of myself, because of people in organizations that socially exclude me. Now, on social media, it's a battlefield. Now, I already talked to the administration about this, there is a Twitter account that is saying that they're the city of Erie. And then on Facebook, there is a group called Fed Up With The Erie Crap And This Is Erie that does nothing but harm and hurt to citizens, period. I know we have people that are elected and people that were going to be elected or people that are trying to make a difference in Erie and that are standing up and not giving up on our hometown, but on social media and in word of mouth, this needs to cease and desist. We need to be more proactive and progressive in how we treat one another. Easter just occurred, and as a Roman Catholic, my deep faith in how we treat one another comes alive again. I mean, one of the Ten Commandments is don't bear false witness against your neighbor. And I do want to again apologize if my actions, if I posted anything, was made feel, made anyone feel uncomfortable, uneasy, hated. But I still think what happened fifty years ago with Martin Luther King Jr. being shot because people hated him for standing up for what is right and what is good in our country and our nation and across the nation, I feel like I am standing here and I have the spirit of Martin Luther King Jr. standing up for those who are lost, those who are forgotten, those who are ostracized, those who are oppressed, and those that are trying to live a healthy, stable life in the city of Erie. And that's not just talking about the LGBT community that I'm standing up for, again, day in and day out. I'm talking about everyone. When we talk about social inclusion, we need to make sure that everyone is accountable and responsible for their actions and antics, because when you say the city of Erie on Twitter, you're representing all of us. And if you have a Facebook group called Fed Up With The Erie Crap that says that this is eerie and putting people down, that is called social exclusion, and people go to drugs, go to alcohol that need the treatment, and I'm just going to let that sit there, but we need to be more passionate and patient and understanding for those that are lost and forgotten.
Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street, second floor. What I wanted to talk about today was how valuable the city planner position is at City Hall and why we felt it was such an important role to start at City Hall. The planner we have is a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and this person brings to the table a code of conduct and ethics that does not exist with any other role in the City Hall. That is why it's been so important to get one here. And I want to read to you some of the things that's in the code of ethics for a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. We shall always be conscious of the rights of others. We shall have special concern for the long-range consequences of present actions. We shall pay special attention to the interrelatedness of decisions. That's the orchestration of planning decisions that was missing at City Hall. We shall provide timely, adequate, clear, and accurate information on planning issues to all affected persons and to governmental decision-makers. We shall give people the opportunity to have a meaningful impact on the development of plans and programs that may affect them. Participation should be broad enough to include those who lack formal organization or influence. We shall seek social justice by working to expand choice and opportunity for all persons, recognizing a special responsibility to plan for the needs of the disadvantaged and to promote racial and economic integration. We shall urge the alteration of policies, institutions, and decisions that oppose such needs. We shall promote excellence of design and endeavor to conserve and preserve the integrity and heritage of the natural and built environment. We shall deal fairly with all participants in the planning process. Those of us who are public officials or employees shall also deal even-handedly with all planning process participants. This is at the core of what we have to have at city council moving forward. That is why we at Erie CPR and with other agencies I'm involved in like Bike Erie, that is why we were desperately looking for such a role to be at City Hall. And now we have someone in that role. That's critical, and that is the responsibility now to make sure that process is followed. And, you know, there were some comments at the end of the last city council meeting that were very relevant to issues that we've been bringing here. One is the comment made by a council member, "The administration is merely a function of us," meaning city council. "You guys are our voice. The mayor's office is an administrative wing, but you are the voice of the people." And that council person acknowledged that. In the case of that, he was talking about the parking authority issues, but that's important to know. And I hope, I remain optimistic that you guys will take that role with vigor and enjoy it. It's not meant to be a job of grief, it's meant to be a job of celebrating community. So we're hoping that that's what council does, and I think you all have that in your heart. So we're hoping for that. Another comment that was made last meeting was that certain money can only be spent on certain things, and that explains why we take exception when people talk about the viaduct and then say, "We should be spending money on other things on the East Side." You can't spend that money on other things at the East Side, folks. And the money that's there can be leveraged for matching funds to finish the preservation plan. So there's optimism out here, but it's cautious optimism as we follow along on what's being done out in the public and whether it lives up to the responsibility of the roles of the people that are doing these things. And I know you're all good people at heart, so that's why there's optimism. So please, folks, look to the city planner and help support that person, do the role that that person is put in to do. All your help in that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist, and I speak as an individual. I do want to make a historical correction. There are a few of us in the room here who are old enough to remember 1968. On April 2nd, 1968, I participated in a walkout from our schools in protest to the Vietnam War, and we rallied at Brooklyn College. And unfortunately, two days later, Martin Luther King was shot and the very next day there I was back at Central Park over that sad incident. But it was not fifty years ago that all the troops left Vietnam, hardly, it was well into the 70s before that happened. But Martin Luther King, for those of us who remember the speeches he made in the week before his death, remember that he was protesting and striving for human dignity for all people and especially for poor people. And I stand here reminding the city that we're not just trying to promote an environment that will attract young millennials and people with disposable income. We are trying to have a city that is welcoming for everybody. I have been talking for over six months about issues related to pedestrian access due to construction activities. There's an ongoing, very long-term project with Erie Insurance that remains not readily accessible for people who are blind and visually impaired, not in compliance with ADA requirements. Also newly started is the project of Velocity Net, which has another example of poor non-compliant notification of the sidewalk closures. And I hope, and that is also a long-term project, and I hope that can be dealt with. There's increasing impedance of pedestrian access related to the project going on with Erie City Mission at 11th and French. I deliver meals on wheels to Friendship Towers, and myself, I had to confront the situation where now the sidewalk along French was closed, and it was very unsafe for me to get to and from my vehicle in order to deliver my meals. There's a large number of people who are accessing that corner, that area, because they go daily to the mission for their meals. A lot of the people living in Friendship Towers go over there, and not all of them speak English. Some of them have disabilities. I know specifically, and I will ask him to get more in touch with the city, that one of the people I know in Two Thio Towers who is visually impaired has had problems accessing that area. Really, we need to have a bicycle pedestrians Committee in this city that is involved with providing input to the city on pedestrian and bicycle issues, some group that can look at plans and provide input to the planning commission and code enforcement. There needs to be a process when permits for construction are issued and sidewalk improvements and other things that affect pedestrian access, that those people getting the permits should know that they have responsibilities to ensure safety and access and notification for pedestrians, and those things should be enforced. This is a continuing thing that the city seems to have no regard for. Just about out of time, but what are you going to do about the viaduct as far as the city has a responsibility to ensure that the repairs and the changes on 12th Street are done before any impedance of pedestrian access to the viaduct occur? That the improvement of the intersection and the traffic signalization at 12th and the Bayfront Connector have to happen before you affect pedestrian access at the viaduct? And what is going to happen to the children who are crossing there? Are they going to just show up one day and find the viaduct closed? People are walking on the viaduct, not because of Erie CPR. People walk on the viaduct because they walk on the viaduct. Erie CPR has gotten involved to try and give a voice to the people who use the viaduct. But you need to have a plan to make sure that people who don't speak English, who don't read the newspaper, who don't watch television, know what's going on. Thank you.
My name is McDowell. My property is 19th and Erie. You know, I've been thinking about that viaduct. What I would like to know is, why is it so urgent to get it torn down? You know what? There's going to be some kids killed trying to get across 12th Street. 12th, yeah, yeah, that's 12th Street. It don't make sense, and it don't make sense to you. You done spent enough money on that viaduct to done repaired it, having different peoples looking at it. Why don't you use your heads? That's what they up there for. My gosh, you must have wanted to see some kids get killed. You were kids one time, I guess you were. You wasn't born grown. Kids are kids, they're going to be playing, they'll probably go out there and get caught, the light changing, somebody might run over one, it's going to happen. Why is it so important to you all and the mayor for that viaduct to be torn down? It don't make sense, and believe me, it's going to come back to haunt you. I hate to see it happen, but I can see further than my nose, and y'all seem to not even make it to your nose. Just because the mayor wanted it torn down, whatever the mayor wants, he get, huh? I mean, I'm glad we got another mayor because the one we had wasn't worth two dead flies. Only time I seen Joe was when he came down for his budget and riding motorcycles out there. The peoples didn't vote you up there to ride motorcycles. They didn't vote for him, the mayor, to ride them either. That viaduct is important for the East Side. I can't see why you can't see that. Those peoples are cut off with that viaduct, and them kids, they probably still going to be walking across there, trying to, walking across the track, trying to get to school. You're going to be sorry that you voted for it to be torn down. I don't know whether you voted for it or not, I don't know how you voted. I know sometime I don't even know, you don't know who's voting which way and that way. It should be, people should be knowing which way you're voting so they'll know how to vote for you. You're up there for the peoples, you're not up there for yourself. But some of you just want to be up there and say, "I'm on city council," it's more than that. You're up there for the, the peoples voted for you because they thought they had a little confidence in you that you would do the right thing. If you think it's right tearing that viaduct down, then go and tear it down. But let me tell you something, when one of them kids get killed, and it don't take with one, it don't take with one, you're going to be sorry. You're going to be thinking, "Well, I should have voted," no, it's too late then. Once you tear that viaduct down, it's gone. You're not going to put another bridge up there. That viaduct is not in that bad a shape. It's not in that bad a shape. Somebody's getting their pockets patted, I believe. I can't see it no other way. You think about the money you done spent, you add all that money up, you done spent enough money for peoples looking, looking ain't worth two dead flies, just looking. They don't know what they're looking for or looking at. I worked construction most of my life, and I worked on them bridges, repairing them bridges. That bridge is not in that bad a shape. That bridge could be saved. Y'all gonna, you're gonna be sorry. You're gonna be sorry that you didn't vote to keep that viaduct. I promise you that. It's a shame. It's a shame. The mayor, well, we needed another mayor, but before you get in good, he talking about the viaduct should be torn down, has he looked at it? Do he know what he's looking at? It's a shame, believe me. It's going to come back to haunt you. I promise you that. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mary Glantz, Union City, or Valley Road, Union City, PA. A structure that is a present-day symbol of what was and what could be. According to Erie Refocused, you'll have to forgive me because I have a voice problem. According to Erie Refocused 2040, the city should be revitalized, how the city looks, what it has to offer, and how the citizens feel. Saving the McBride Viaduct for an elevated green space with walking and biking paths would empower and give hope to the neighbors on both sides of the span. They would have something practical as well as inviting. School, ball fields, businesses are on both sides. A bike path over the viaduct, down East Avenue to the bay, where a ferry could take pedestrians and bikers to the peninsula. How great would that be for the East Side? Groups are working on State Street and Parade Street, why not the viaduct and East Avenue? I am here because I care. I listened to Mayor Sinat say no, to Mayor Shember say no, to city council vote against a public hearing. Every day, there is news about Erie Refocused and all the other studies the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on to tell us what we need to do. You hired a planning director, you're talking to businesses and students and citizens, and yet, when it comes to that section of the East Side, predominantly black immigrants and poor whites, it seems their safety and needs don't matter. Put yourself in those neighborhoods or in their shoes. Then, would it be worth doing? Would it be worth saving? You have listened to how many people at how many meetings, hours and hours, you could have had a public hearing in less time. The city has a right of way over the tracks. If that is lost sometime in the future, it might be a significant loss. For all the talk about revitalizing the city and then ignoring church groups, CPR, other neighbors, all those who have been fighting to make the East Side better and safer, does not make sense. I am asking the mayor and city council for transparency. What is the real reason the McBride Viaduct has to come down? What is the urgency to tear it down? And who stands to benefit? Promises made? Someone stands to gain a lot because the city of Erie has so much to lose.
Good morning. John Schubert, 2413 East Avenue. You know, when I worked in the shop, we, at first, the company started buying equipment for us that they thought was going to make our job easier and do the right thing. Well, we formed a committee, and that committee, we said, "Why don't you ask the people that actually work on the job? Let them decide what they need." And quite frankly, it worked out much better. Everyone's trying to make a decision for the East Side, the East Siders, been there all my life. I know what's good for the East Side, and most of you, a few of you, had been on the East Side. You keep saying, "Well, there's other important things." No, there isn't other important things. I agree, there is a few, but that bridge is really, really important. You know, they've been talking for years now about the Bayfront, we have to make it wider. Why are we diverting traffic on the Bayfront? Instead of the way the exit was on Buffalo Road, it was designed to go right down East Avenue, over the bridge. East Avenue again, I've mentioned this before, if you could take a bowling ball now and throw it down throw it down the road. We lost businesses, people, and like I said, it's a poor community in that area. And these people, a lot of them, as they keep telling you, they don't have cars, you know, they're immigrants, some of them don't speak English, you know, it's, it's, it's just a, an area that people do not have a lot. And you're really taking a lot away from them by getting rid of that bridge. The, the viaduct, you got to remember, and I mentioned this to you before, you don't want to give up your right of way to that railroad. If you give up that railroad, it's gone forever. You need that access. And as many of you said, you weren't interested in the park, neither was I. I really believe that we should be back to traffic. Council had set aside, it was either three or $350,000, to put this money back so that the city could pay. When L.R. Kimball made that study, they said it would take approximately seven million to get that bridge back to traffic safely. Right now, basically, we're talking foot traffic. Foot traffic, you know, it doesn't take a lot for, you know, PennDOT themselves, Bill Pettit had actually mentioned that that bridge would stand 100 years. Can you imagine that, 100 years, if we didn't do anything? 100 years, it's a well-constructed bridge, and it can be repaired. You know, when the mayor was running for campaign, he promised a number of eastsiders, I just heard this recently at a meeting, they are very distressed, the fact that he says, "I will help you with that bridge." And yet, we can't even get a meeting, public meeting. I've been on that committee since 2010, working on this, and I've gone to every meeting that I could possibly go to. And it's just a question that, again, is anyone listening? As, as I mentioned in one of the other council meetings, we changed the chief of police, maybe we should be looking at the engineers, there should be some changing, because there's a lot of bad information that's out there. I've learned so much about the bridges, and I'm disappointed that nobody is, "Hey, why are they putting a new bridge out on Mill Fair Road? Two new bridges. They told us it would be 25 million to do the bridge." They did their bridges for 12 million, same distance. So it just kind of makes you wonder. And you know, the, the kids today, there's a lot of you who are involved in, in projects and that, the kids walking not only to school, but you got a boys' club, you got baseball, parks down there, you got basketball courts and that, they need access, and a safe access. And again, it's, the closest is approximately a third of a mile more that the kids would have to walk to and from if they use that bayfront. And the bayfront, believe me, if you had children, I'm, I'm sure that you would never. And again, too, when we put in anything like the bayfront, the bayfront just literally tore up the east side neighborhoods and what have you. So please reconsider what you've done. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Good morning, members of city council. My name is Father Jerry Priscero, 921 East Avenue. In August 20, on August 20th, 2005, in an episode of The Simpsons, Homer Simpson said on national TV, "Stop doing stupid things." 10 years later, for $130,000, Charles Bukey, the lead consultant of Erie Refocused, summarized the entire study with some memorable words quoted from Homer Simpson, "Stop doing stupid things." Martin Luther King Jr., 50 years later, would not be proud of the city of Erie, because there are numerous civil rights violations as they pertain to the McBride Viaduct. Redlining, exclusivity, refusal to conduct a public hearing, violation of the Sunshine Act, discriminatory process in selecting a preferred alternative for a federal transportation feasibility study, numerous environmental justice violations, distributional justice violations, process justice violations, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Section 601 violations. Brian Krul, lead consultant for the federal transportation feasibility study, former employee of PennDOT, makes the entire federal transportation feasibility study biased and flawed from the very beginning because of his close connections. Other violations, shifting of federal, state, and local transportation monies away from investing and sustaining minority and low-income neighborhoods to more affluent areas of the city, county, and metropolitan region. And this mayor is involved in this. A new gateway in his own neighborhood, one of the wealthiest neighborhoods in the city of Erie, a, a new gateway in his backyard. Over $400 million in transportation money has entered the city of Erie between 2000 and 2018. And wouldn't you believe, the majority of that money has been spent in wealthier neighborhoods. More violations, a lack of minority and low-income representation on all levels of government and government agencies regarding employment and decision-making for the McBride Viaduct and the Buffalo Road Interchange Transportation Project, including the mayor's administration, the city engineer department, the Erie County Executive's Administration, PennDOT, the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Board, Olzak Consulting Firm, L.R. Kimball Engineering, Trans Systems, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, the city of Erie Community and Economic Development, the Erie Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Erie County Department of Community and Economic Development. City council may think it's had the last word on the McBride Viaduct, and two mayors may think they've had the last word on the McBride Viaduct, but a higher power now is involved. And you'll find out how you must answer in regards when it comes to obeying laws regarding civil rights.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call. Are there any more citizens to be heard? That will take us into the ordinance.
Ordinance is for final passage. Council File Number 15619, official ordinance number 102018. An ordinance appropriating, appropriating the sum of $100,000 to be received as a transfer from the Economic Development and Recruitment Project to the City of Erie Business Development Fund for the Purposes of Job Creation, Investment, and Economic Development in the city of Erie. Sponsored by Mr. Muraski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15619, and now known as Official File Ordinance 102018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 102018, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinance is for first reading. Council File Number 15620, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,004, 400, $3,004, 474.
I think that's 300.
304, 474, thanks, Cas. And the city of Erie Debt Service Fund for anticipated and unappropriated fund balance. This appropriation completes the transfer of balance sheet account between the general fund and sewer fund, which alleviates inter-fund receivables and payables between these funds. By Mr. Muriski, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15620, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15620 by yea seven, yea seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File Number 15621, an ordinance closing and vacating a 25-foot portion of the right of way at the northwest corner of West 8th Street and Beverly Drive. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Muriski, the council file ordinance number 15621, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15621 by yea seven, nay zero, Council File 15622, an ordinance closing and vacating a public alleyway from West 21st and West 22nd Street between Peach and Sass, with reservation of existing utility rights of way. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Muriski, the council file ordinance number 15622, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15622 by yea seven, nay zero, That'll take us into new business.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Muriski.
I'd like the motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Are there any separations?
I seconded that.
Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. We do have a waive rules, Madam President.
Can I speak to that, or shall I wait?
Yes, you can speak on it.
Let me.
Okay, no problem.
Let us vote to waive the rules, then I'll read it, and then you can have your discussion. Okay, this is regarding the request that Mike Kelly hold an open public meeting with the Erie County Students Coalition. So, voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that city council respectively request U.S. Representative Mike Kelly, our third district, to hold and conduct an open public town hall meeting with the Erie County Students Coalition concerning gun violence and school safety. Whereas the recent incidents of gun violence have caused concern for the general public students and parents of students, a public town hall meeting would afford everyone concerned a chance to express their concerns, offer opinions, and propose possible solutions. And whereas the youth of this nation represent our future, and the concerns and opinions must be considered as we confront this serious issue, and whereas the people of this great nation and its young people have taken similar stands in the past, so therefore be it resolved that the city council of Erie, Pennsylvania supports its local students and the Erie County Students Coalition in their request for an open public town hall meeting.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Reason why I brought this forward, I had a long talk with one of the student members of this committee, and it came to my attention, as I, I don't really read the paper, I was referred to Go Erie, and upon reading what they were trying to accomplish, I thought it was important that the students had their day, as they say in court. When I was a member of the school board, they many times shut down the kids, would let, not let them talk, even though many of them were taxpayers as they worked. But these young people are faced with a reality every day that their world has changed from the one that you and I were brought up in. And I think it's important that in two years, some of them will be toting a weapon for the United States of America as soldiers, as members of the armed forces, and some of them will be adults doing other things in life. And that, for us not to listen to them, to their concerns, is a travesty. This is a far different world, and a lot of mention was made of Vietnam today. And 50-some years ago, when the youth of America took to the streets, some of us disagreed with them, and some of us agreed with them. But there was an open dialogue that finally led the politicians and those that had the willpower to decide what was better for this nation. Now, that's still to be determined by history. But I think these young people are exhibiting something I'm very proud of, and I, and I told this young lady, I hope they can, they can continue this by registering to vote, going to the polls when they're old enough, and making a difference in the world. Many generations, mine included, said we would, and some of us didn't, some of us never followed through with that promise. So I'm proud to support these, these young, young ladies and gentlemen that want to come forward and address the issue. And I think it's only fair that our congressmen address those concerns from the students and from the general public. I think it's come that time in our country that we need to do this. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
No questions, I just wanted to thank Councilman Kwiatowski for taking the initiative on this. A couple of months ago, in September, I was a volunteer at the, whatever, the Constitution Day event that Erie Together had organized for the second year in a row, which was to teach kids about civic engagement. And we started again, and we came here, we went to the federal courthouse, went to the county courthouse, and I think that a, a town hall meeting is a really important part of civic engagement, and it's something that we want to encourage. So, thank you, Cas, for taking the initiative on this.
Any other comments?
Just one comment, Madam President. Cas, I want, Mr. Kwiatowski, I want to thank you for, for doing this, and in a world where the Kardashians are more well-known to students than their congressmen, the fact that these young people want to meet with their congressmen, want to become involved civically, and be engaged civically, is something that we should support, and I want to thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Muriski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. That'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Okay, we'll start with Cas.
Real quick, we attended the O&amp;E pension meeting, and the fund is doing very well, nothing to report out of the ordinary, continues to make good progress even this somewhat challenging economy we face. And one final note to the administration, as I drive down Parade Street, it's come up time and time again, citizens have approached me about the cars that are parked blocking the sidewalk, and that starts approximately 19th Street, it can vary up to 24th Street, usually on the east side of the street. We have merchants that think our right of way is their parking lot, and they also think it's a place to sell vehicles, and as you go down there, you'll see barricades, cars parking sidewalks. I know it's a, when I checked in on the past, it's hard to say whether it's code enforcement, engineering, but I think in this case, it's probably the police department. But numerous citizens have asked, "Why, why is Parade Street looking the way it is?" You know, here we, we're trying to clean up the city, and one of the gateways for those on the east side... on the east side coming into, like my council meetings and everything, and I drive that street frequently, it was frustrating. There should have been no cars there in winter time, but it was understandable. But blocking that sidewalk cannot be tolerated no more. Please see if I get the appropriate officials to tell these merchants that's not, it's a public right-of-way, not theirs. Thank you.
Kathy.
I would like to address the viaduct safety at this time. The waterworks, people are doing construction down there, and for pedestrians, period, it is not safe to go near that area. I still would like to see the McBride Viaduct saved. I want that on record. I want to talk about the pollution and the garbage lying around, and I know it's extremely windy out there, and the snow has melted. One of the things that makes pedestrians safe is to walk without glass, broken bottles and things, and I do a lot of walking, and there needs to be a lot of pickup. So hopefully, residents, we all need to pigeon because spring is here, the snow is gone, and there is a lot of garbage that needs to be addressed. We're in our pickup right now, and the, it's supposed to be one big pickup, and I've seen like a house worth of garbage in front of people's houses to be picked up. And even though it's supposed to be just one, hopefully that will all get picked up and addressed. Jay Sen, congratulations on doing your requirements for your drug and alcohol treatment. That is a big thing in a person's life, and hopefully your role modeling will help others that there is treatment out there, treatment available for everyone who has an addiction problem to get the help that they need and stick to it. Freda, you have very good pedestrian safety issues that need to be addressed for any types of construction going on. Renee, hopefully, you know, the city can address these issues because every person should be able to walk safely, not just the sighted, but everyone with any type of disability should be able to get the passageway that they need through the city safely. Yesterday, I attended the Northwest Bayfront Meeting, and there's a lot of positive things going on in their neighborhood. The parks in that neighborhood will be addressed and beautified, and that makes good living because even if you don't have a lot of income to spend, just being in a safe, clean park, being able to play tennis, basketball, baseball, whatever, just to sit there, just to get refreshed, just to get energized, to be outside by the lake, that is all good for our quality of living. And it was nice to see that David Brennan and John Riedinger had collaborated together to make a park at Park, Pocket Park, on West Fourth and Plum, and it was just ironic that I was just walking through that neighborhood the other day and saw the empty space, and my husband and I were saying, well, wonder what we could do there, and it was good to know that something is going to happen there, and it's going to be a part of history, too. They're doing a historic imprint of the building that was there and the history behind the building, but also making it a park. So there is a lot of good things, and to me, I really feel that Erie is on the verge of things, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning once again, everyone. Did attend the EMTA meeting this past week, as well as Mr. Peterson gave us a briefing again this morning in caucus. Naturally, updates of Phase Two of the project, some of the very good possibilities that will happen after this project or Phase Two is completed, one being just having a parking hub there on 14th Street and then having a free shuttle service to the downtown area. But better things to come in that area of 14th Street, and although the completion isn't going to be till later next year, it does look bright for the inner city down there, as well as council's going to get an opportunity as a whole to visit it and tour the facility, the one that's been completed, as well as the one that's in process. Also, they attended the Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority meeting along with Ms. Councilwoman Allen. It was nice that she was there, and I know we had a little joke there at the end of the meeting, but it was nice that she was there and any other council people that would ever want to go to any of these meetings, even though we are liaison to certain authorities, all of councils are invited, whether it be public watch or public meetings like that. Even though somebody's name is there and they're the liaison, all of council is invited if they have the time. In that meeting, they did pass the master plan for the Port Authority area. People don't realize that is 47100 acres of land down there. Naturally, they're not redeveloping it all or changing it all, but they have a lot of property down there that's prime real estate, that's in the best interests of the city, and it's something we need to take a hold of. There is, it is a 20-year master plan, can be viewed online, eriewestpennsylvaniaportauthority.com. One thing they did mention was although you have this plan, there's always room for, to change things. Everything isn't set in stone. It can be altered or changed as needed, as well as getting any public input. Once again, our city spring cleanup. Sometimes it looks pretty grim out there when you see piles of garbage, but, and items, but take advantage of it, citizens, please. Take advantage of it. If you have something you need to get rid of, or your neighbor, and they need help getting it to the curb, City Council and the administration, we put $100,000 in the budget a year for this program. It has been a great success in the past. Just, hey, it helps clean up the city, just like Councilwoman was saying, the city looks after the winter thaw, or whatever, we got the garbage and litter, and help your neighbors, help the neighborhood. Clean up and take advantage of the city taking it away for you. Other than that, naturally, pothole hotline, 870-1340. They do have that call line, they've had a list, they claim the list is up to date where they have nobody has called that there's any potholes out there that anybody has called in on. They are taking shifts through the city without the call list, just going through the city to see if there's any, but normally you call it in, they tell me within 24-hour, a city worker should be there to fill that pothole. That's all I got. Thank you.
Please.
Thanks, Mrs. Arrington. Cas and Mr. Murzky and I, this is a committee, subcommittee led by Cas, met with the administration to talk about the rental inspection program. We had a really good meeting with the administration to find out about some things that are taking place to address some of the issues that were raised in the audit report. So I thought that was a really positive meeting. Kathy Shaw and I did some exploration on our own about the data that's available that's being collected on rental inspections, so we're really educating ourselves on that. Kathy and I also went to the Robins Blast Neighborhood Watch, I think that was just last week. It was a small group that Robins Blast Neighborhood is, the Neighborhood Watch meets at the Whole Foods Co-op, and Michael Outlaw came and one of the zoning, one of the code enforcement officers, so there were some really good questions and dialogue about how you bring attention to code enforcement if there's something happening in your neighborhood. The larger discussion that I thought was interesting was how do you get people excited about your neighborhood? And so, some real discussion, great dialogue between Michael Outlaw and the citizens there about kind of moving from just thinking of neighborhood organizations as Neighborhood Watch, looking out for crime, into, you know, turning them into more, how do you celebrate the positive aspects of your neighborhood? I know Kathy went to one of the downtown partnership meetings the other night, you went, right? The Gateway Presentation. I went to one yesterday. I understand that the meetings on Monday yielded a lot of creative ideas about identifying really cool stuff that might be happening in downtown. I also made a vow last month that, you know, we could talk about positive things happening in Erie, and there, I had kind of a long list, I think last time I ran out of time because I talked too much, but I thought, there was a story in the paper last week, Erie ranks amongst the healthiest housing markets. I think that's really good news, talked about the stability of prices here, and also the people who do this survey look at the economic outlook in terms of jobs. I also think, though, that it's important, as we're talking about rehabbing housing downtown and concentrating on the east and west bayfront neighborhoods, there is concern about what happens to rental prices and whether people will be displaced. So I wanted to let people know the 12th Annual Fair Housing Seminar is going to be Wednesday, April 25th, at Blasco Library, and you can find out more by pre-registering, by emailing CS, or cscaliis@eriecountypa.gov. It looks like a really good panel. It's an all-day event, and there is a $10 charge to go to that. I said after last night, I wish that we had like a civic calendar because there's so much stuff going on in Erie, sometimes it's hard to pick and choose what you want to go to. For instance, last night was the Erie Refocused Meeting at our west bayfront. There was something that I was invited to at Barron talking about entrepreneurship. The Barron brought in a speaker to talk about entrepreneurship and economic development and what's happening in Erie, but I chose to go to, and I know Freda was there and probably some other people in the audience, the Carlotta Walls Lanier Speech at Mercy Hersch University. She was one of the Little Rock Nine, and it was a pretty full house there, and I wanted to thank Doris Sepola, who's usually here advocating for the viaduct, but she's the one who sponsored that talk. And there were so many good takeaways from this woman's experience about what it was like, you're talking about, you know, teenagers speaking out about gun violence, but she really put us in her shoes about what it was like to integrate a school in 1957 at age 14, when she said there were, you know, 1,000 troops that Eisenhower sent in to assure the safety. And I learned a lot about the history of that historic moment, and actually what happened afterwards from her speech. She said a couple of things. She said, "It sounds so basic, but be kind to one another. I say to you, have a day that matters." And she said, "You can have dialogue without confrontation," and I thought that those were really good takeaways considering some of the contentious things that we deal with in Erie. And one last, well, two more positive things, the Healthy Corner Store initiatives that are going on, and tonight, there is a salute to the Drum Major Community Forum at Blasco Library from 5:15 to 7:15 with film highlights of Dr. King and a panel discussion. So I'm sure there'll be a good turnout for that.
Madam President, just a few things to report. We do have our finance meeting immediately following today's meeting in the caucus room. A lot of things to discuss regarding the finances of the city and making sure that we're on track. You know, a lot of times people, they think that we just deal with the budget at budget time at the end of the year, and the reality is every month we meet and fine-tune the budget, make sure that we're going over things, make sure we're meeting the projections in the budget, and if we're not, making adjustments accordingly with the administration so that the cities run, not necessarily, so that we don't run in the negative, but also that, you know, there's not a huge fund reserve at the end, too, because it is taxpayer money. We want to be good stewards of that money. We also had a convention center meeting, just a few things to report from the convention center. The Sea Wolves opening day is Friday, April 13th, at 6:05 p.m. versus the Altoona Curve at UPMC Park, I almost called it Jerry Oak Park, bad habit. So UPMC Park, Altoona Curve, Friday, April 13th, 6:05, obviously weather permitting. And the Erie Bayhawks made the playoffs, and so their game is Friday, April 6th, at Erie Insurance Arena at 8:00 p.m. And then just a few things that were on the agenda that I didn't pull, but I wanted to discuss. The first thing was the Enterprise Zone Review Committee formally ratified the $162,500 loan to West End Hardware, which is on 19th and Liberty. West End bought the property adjacent to them, and they're going to be expanding. It's a local business, and I want to thank the people who serve on that Enterprise Loan Committee, its bankers and businessmen in the city, and these loans are through state funds that they give to the city to help local businesses grow and expand and create jobs. And so with that, there'll be some, they're going to almost double in size and create new jobs in the city, so with a 15-year term. And what we do with the money, with the interest from that, is then we put it back into the fund, and we're able to distribute more to businesses in the city. I know last year, we did BB Trucking on East 12th Street, they expanded to service now school buses in addition to semis, and these are the types of small investments that the city's able to make, but over time, they make a big difference, especially for those small business owners. And the other thing I wanted to just address was the closing of the right-of-way on 8th Street and Beverly Drive. That was on paper as part of the city initially going to be a park when that was developed a long time ago, and in practice, it's been off the tax rolls, but it's been used by the community as a parking lot, basically, for that business. And so this is putting it back, it's for what it's being used for, the city has no intention of developing it, and so this will put it on the tax rolls, which will eventually help the city. This was just the first reading, though, for that, but I wanted to explain to the people why we were doing what we were doing. In practice, it's already being used for that, this will put it on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we started a year off bad with the gun violence going on again. You know, it's just sad. We lose enough lives through just natural causes other than people going out and shooting and killing each other. You know, we have mental health issues, we have domestic violence issues. We have to come together as a community. We hear a lot of talk about the opioid epidemic, but we can't just stop there, the gun violence, too. Both of these issues are taking out our loved ones. Whether somebody die at the hand of drugs or at the hand of guns, it hurts the families, it hurts the friends, it hurts our community. We have to keep this conversation about both issues going because it's very sad. Every time I hear somebody lose their life, it take me... it takes me back to what happened to my son. You know, and I, too, Kaz, want to thank you for bringing this issue up with the kids and the gun violence. Because I've been saying this for a long time. Us as adults, we can go out here and holler and scream to the top of our lungs. They're not going to listen. But when the people who is really affecting, which is our youth, when they start talking, people start listening. So I'm proud of each and every one of our kids in our city all around the world who took a stand to fight against the gun violence and everything. Because enough is enough, you know? All these gun shootings, it was just a shooting yesterday for, was it YouTube? It's sad. People get in a hold of these guns. They get mad, they get upset. They want to go take other people's lives. And it's devastating. So we need to do what we can do for our city. I can't speak on nobody else's, but if we come together as a city and do what we need to do to protect our children, our citizens, our streets, then we'll have a much better community to live in. And as for the viaduct, I've been saying it for day one. I'm in support of keeping the viaduct because we need the viaduct. I'm in support of public safety for our kids. I worry, too, about when the viaduct is torn down, what's going to happen to our children. And I do hope the city make all the changes that they need to make before the viaduct is torn down to make sure that our children are safe. I wish we can have a public meeting. You know, it takes more than one vote to have a public meeting. I wish we could have a public meeting and listen to what our citizens have to say, you know? I did all that I can do. But if the viaduct, it has to be torn down, please make sure our children are safe. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to you, Teresa. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Witherspoon is back with us.
Thank you very much. I apologize. Usually, my conference call with Harrisburg is usually about 10 or 15 minutes. Some reason, they went on and on today. But they paid a light bill, so I had to listen. For the record, I want to abstain from the contract with Gdic for the Summer League. Let the record show that. I did get a call from a young man, businessperson on the west side, on West 26th Street, where you come off of 79 and you roll on to 26th Street. He gave a good idea. He said, "Mel, when visitors come in, there's nothing there that beautifies Erie, nothing to say. Welcome to Erie. There's just nothing there." And that gave me something to think about. When we go into some cities, there's just something to say welcome and there's beautification. And we need to do that wherever the bayfront or a highway coming to our city. We need to start welcoming folks. And I thought that was a good idea. And I told him I was going to bring it up. And I'll stay on that topic. Regarding the Summer League, registration has started. It's online at spoonsleague.org. We are looking for volunteers, men and women. We can teach you how to keep score. If you want to join our security team, we would like to have you there. If you'd like to be in a referee, we have PIA as well as community individuals, male and female. We'll take you through some training as well. We also have rules of conduct for coaches. We have workshops for coaches. We have workshops for parents. All this take place prior to the league beginning. And everyone in the city, if you are interested in helping. Last year, we had 316 young men and women playing. And that's from 5:00 until probably 9:30 PM. And I dare not say that between that hours in center city, the crime rate, incident rate decrease. Now, when you decide, and if you decide to volunteer, don't think it's going to be easy. You're going to hear a whole bunch of talking and all kinds of language from young ladies and from young men. And it's all about what we do. We don't control them. You can't control these young folks today. You've got to understand them, and you work with them, and you talk with them, and you talk with the parents. We do make house calls when we have to get a little tight with individuals. And we have rules. And we have removed individuals from a team. We have suspended them for two or three games. I have suspended two kids for life. And I thought, he said, "Well, I'm not going to be playing for life." I said, "You ain't going to play no more here." Based on what he did. So, and then, of course, parents will call and say, "Well, he's sorry." Yeah, well, I'm sorry, too. But what he did cannot be tolerated. So there's a lot of things that goes on. Now, that's at East 19th Street between French and Holland. We also did something last year for the young men and women at Bayview. We went down there. We wasn't sure how that's going to work. Well, it was a big thing. We did about two weeks, maybe three weeks down there just to see how it went. And it was a great success. The individuals came out, parents came out, the volunteers came out. And we're going to need more volunteers this year because we anticipate of having maybe 200 kids playing there. I've decided not to allow, see, that's my five minutes. Oh, yeah. And I'm not going to allow young men, young ladies to play in both leagues because that costs me a little more money to buy extra shirts. So if I got 300 at one place, and then I got to buy another 300 with the same people. So you're going to play one or the other this year. And no, we will not have a championship between east side and west side. That's a problem. That stigma still exists. I don't like you because you're on the east side, and I don't like you on the west side. That stigma still exists from grandparents to parents to children today. It's sad that State Street causes a problem. So there'll be no championship there. Each one will have a championship, and that will be it. Thank you, Madam President, for the extra 30 seconds.
Okay, Teresa. Sue.
Well, good morning, everybody. I just, just a couple of minutes. Thank you, Madam President. This past week, our city taxes were due at discount. So there was a lot of activity in the treasurer's office. So I'd like to thank our homeowners who graciously were in the office, yes, and were pleasant and very nice with our staff. I'd like to thank my staff, Ed, Kelly, Debbie, Lauren, and Erin for being kind to all of our residents. I don't think there was any complaints. They did the 2010 rule that was put on them by our mayor, which I think they had before the mayor came along. I just needed to say that. I do know that our citizens, over the years, have been quite gracious when paying their taxes. I've been doing this for a long time. I have found that they come here with a lot of money to pay and very little complaints. And with that, I'd like to thank them for that. And that has a lot to say for you people up there, the people who have sat on the fifth floor. There have been, you know, people who come here to give their concerns and heavy hearts. But in the long run, I think we've done all that we can do from the bottom of our hearts in the right way. And if you sit in the treasurer's office for a while when the people are coming in, you will hear that. So kudos to you guys. Thanks.
Renee.
Good morning. I have just a few things. Freda, I was out yesterday, but I did get your emails, and I will be following up on Erie Insurance Velocity Net and City Mission. I did get an update on the big mound of dirt at the viaduct that was blocking the entrance. That has to do with Chivers Construction, which is part of the Water Authority project. And they have assured us that they're going to move that, that they cannot block the viaduct. Okay, good. And PennDOT did make a promise that the viaduct would be open until the other improvements were made for the students. So there will be a temporary detour across the viaduct while they're working on it until a more permanent detour can be created. So I know that that's in the works. I have to get further follow-up on that today. And if nobody's replied to you yet, be emailed, they will be. Let's see. I wanted to thank council for authorizing the cooperative agreement between the City of Erie and the Northwest Pennsylvania Regional Testing Consortium and Mercyhurst University to take on the testing for the police officers. This is actually going to save applicants money because they were taking both tests for the city police department and for the consortium, which was costing them between the two $125. Now they will have just one flat fee of $75. In addition, the city's testing was only done every two years. And so, you know, that was a long span of time. This, the consortium does it annually. So that will give us a better pool of applicants every year. It will save the city time in doing that testing and arranging for that process. And with that extra time, we will be able to focus on minority recruitment, which is a major goal of the police department and the administration. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Bedden.
I have nothing.
Okay. And with that said, I'd like to thank you citizens for coming out and discussing with us your concerns and issues as far as the city. Trust and believe, we're listening to you. And whatever we can do to help you, that's what we're here for. And thanks for staying till the end and listening to our rebuttal on some of your issues. And that adjourns our council meeting. Thank you.
City Council adjourns at 10:26. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Winarzki.